All right, we call the meeting to order, roll call.
Mayor Corbett?
Here.
Honored Hudson?
Here.
Honored Matthews?
Here.
Honored Silver?
Here.
Honored Spicer?
Here.
Need to adopt the agenda of the motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We oppose. Motion carries. New business review the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four proposed budget.
Uh, this is the time here with, uh, the finance director and I wrap up, uh, the budget cycle for the year and, uh, we're getting ready to put it into ordinance form. So we like to spend time with the board and go over the different aspects of the fifteen different budgets that we've managed. Looking at, we usually start out with the general fund budget, so I'm hoping that's the first one in front of you that you get to see at the top, the general fund. And one of the key takeaways we're looking at is, you know, how much are we gonna bring in and how much are we going to spend in a year? And then we look at our fund balance ending and making sure that we have enough funds and, you know, to carry us through each from year to year. As you know, our property taxes come in at a certain time of year, sales tax is generated all year long. So some of our stable stuff we try to use out of, uh, like our debt management, we use some from sales tax. Property taxes, they're high, you know, right now we, they're, most of them are in. But then as we start depleting our funds throughout the summer months and that, that starts to go back down. So what we, we try to keep an operating revenue goal of thirty percent in all of our accounts. And we, we have that list at the bottom, you can see it under fund balances. This particular budget, uh, year when we, I finished it up, where we projected will be around twenty-six point six percent. Now, that's kind of standard, we're usually in the mid twenties on our general fund because it's such a large fund and there's so many variables that can affect it. Big dollar variables which can sway either way, like at the end of March, we were at sixty-four percent, we projected. Uh, another thing we look at on the revenue side is obviously our property taxes, are we gonna have an increase in property tax? No, this year I'm not, we're not recommending that you increase property taxes at all. The next question comes up, well, Robertson County just did a appraisal of all the properties and the property values went up higher. Yes, they do, and then if you could look at your, I gave you a little handout sheet that has a couple of different, uh, taxes filled. One of them is the schedule of tax rate. And I had to take a look at that. This comes out of our audit. And once you get there, I'll kind of go down through it, just kind of give you an idea. We're, we're right now at a dollar twenty-eight, both in our Robertson and Summer Counties after we collect first based on such value. The, uh, the last time we made a change was in two thousand twenty, you can see we went from a dollar three. We went from a dollar three to a dollar twenty-eight, is everybody there with me okay? Okay? That was, uh, that was the choice of the board.
No, it's not.
It's not, it's in that second, it's in that handout again, your return taxes.
Yeah, it's in the state book.
Got it? We got it. Okay. And, and, uh, as you see in two thousand twenty, we went from a dollar three to a dollar twenty, that was a choice of this board to ask for an increase. And again, that's why I mentioned to you all about, you know, one of the reasons we were able to, to do the, the, the new recreation center. The, uh, the last time we had an appraisal in Robertson County, you can see, was in two thousand eighteen. Every five years they do these reappraisals. And our tax rate had been a dollar twenty-three, and when they made that appraisal change, they dropped it to a dollar three. If we would've kept it at a dollar twenty-three, that would've been considered a tax increase on the residents and we would've had to post it that we were asking for a tax increase. But that's not the case, we did not do that at that point. The following year, the, uh, Summer Counties did their tax appraisal. And because we're a split city, the state, uh, we're split amongst two different counties, the state has a certain rule on that, that they try to balance the two out and make them equal. And they did that in two thousand nineteen with the reappraisal of Summer County. You see, they changed, the Summer County to a dollar three, six-two, and then, uh, you can see they, they bumped up Robertson County just a little bit to make it equal, an equal, uh, amount for each size of our county. So all our residents are paying the same rate now as a dollar three there. So this year, knowing that, uh, that the reappraisal value was, you know, on Robertson County was rather high. Uh, Jason, when he looked at the numbers that came in from the reappraisal, he looked at, uh, showing revenues on our Robertson County side, our residents on the Robertson County side, at eighty-eight cents. So they figured it could drop that, that significant amount from a dollar twenty-eight to eighty-eight cents, which is pretty significant drop. That's the equalization law that the state has that requires us to make sure that we're not collecting any more taxes based on higher property values unless we ask for those taxes to be increased by the residents. So, uh, so somebody asked you about that, we're not, I'm not asking for a property tax increase even though this reappraisal process is ongoing right now. So that's what we did, so that way you're aware of that and how that works. So again, looking at, uh, the general fund budget, um, we're projecting twenty-six point six percent. So what I'd like to do is, as we, as we walk through the, the first couple of schedules is, is your, it's gonna be your revenue side of things. And then, uh, we get into the, uh, into our, uh, in the individual departments. And I have each department out here so they can explain any, any changes or anything they'd like to discuss. So I'll start with, uh, Derek, who's responsible for legislative administrative budgets. Is there anything, Derek, that you would like to specifically mention to them about your particular budget and any changes that were made as a result?
Uh, so my budget starts on page four. If you can, if you go down line by line, uh, the lines that I am, and I am responsible for, um, I'm not responsible for, sort of like salaries or anything kind of like HR related, so like hospital insurance. I started off, uh, essentially with the employee training. So, uh, next year I'm budgeting fifty-three thousand five hundred, so that was an increase, um, probably close to twenty thousand dollars. And that is for, um, we are doing an ICMA internship, um, so that's for, that increase was for that intern. And then we keep going down, the next major increase, um, was membership and subscription dues. Uh, we got notified, uh, here recently that TML and GNRC, uh, who are both members of, uh, are increasing their fees a little bit. So that's just their orgies, um, with their fees. Down to two eighty-seven, which is meals and entertainment. Uh, that's an additional four thousand dollars for the Southern County Council of Government Luncheon, uh, that we are supposed to be hosting this year. Uh, so you'll be invited, it'll be in September for that. The next major, uh, line item, uh, is special events. Um, that is where Americana, Music Under the Stars, um, Memorial Day, all our special events comes out of that line. Um, and we, um, that cost estimate says right now, um, Americana with our buses, kind of, so we had to increase that line a little bit. Uh, and that is for Adam. Any questions or ones that you all have?
Yeah, then I'll move on to the next, would be engineering, which is, uh, it's pretty much the, the one budget I oversee, uh, with Jason Reynolds, our engineer. The, uh, contractual services, uh, I have in there the White House Heritage High School road extension. Uh, the reason that's contractual instead of, uh, capital project and asset for the city is because we're gonna build the road and this, and then the, the road will be launched to Robertson County schools. We'll, we'll own, take ownership of it. The other part of it is our contract with CSR, and I have some small additional projects in there, like, uh, we, we have, uh, some right-of-way that we're trying to purchase for, uh, Calista Road. And, uh, and looking at some design work on Marley Road and that intersection. Uh, the, um, the nine-hundred line that I have is, uh, we have the one point one million dollars in there for the pedestrian safety grant, which is an eighty-twenty grant from the state. We're in, we're in that process. Now, I don't know if we'll get to the full construction of it before the end of the fiscal year, but I want to have it covered just in case we do. The, uh, Sage Road widening, I have two hundred fifty thousand budgeted out of the budget to do the widening from Madeline Lane to Cardinal. And then I, I have money coming out of Impact East, which I'll share with you later, five hundred thousand dollars, I set aside for that project there. And Calista Road widening, I said I got seventy-five thousand dollars in there for that too. So that's what I put in there, I did pull out some projects like the North Palmer's Chapel, uh, widening, I pulled that out because we just not, we were not gonna be able to make our budget numbers work by keeping that in there this year. And so I pulled that. And so that pretty much takes care of that. The, uh, White House Heritage High School bids did come in today, um, and I think we got a pretty good bid, it's just a, uh, just under five hundred thousand, so I was, I overprojected on that anyway. So, uh, we should be good to go, that'll be coming before your board meeting, come up here, may, asking for us to go ahead and enter into contractual agreement. I know Jason's still looking at the numbers, the Rogers Group in session to, uh, send and seal bids in for that, and, uh, Rogers Group had a lower bid that I could tell. So Jason and I, I think that's who we're gonna end up going with, so.
Do we have a timing on when that'll be done?
Well, we, we projected it to be done and, uh, afterward in contractual, it'll be done over the summer months, well, before the school gets back going. I'm hoping that we can, but then maybe doing finishing, I'm working at when we get into, you know, autumn, September probably. So at least we can get that going. That'll be, I think, a big, uh, safety issue for that side of town and definitely with the students that are going in and out of the school, using the back way with the, and parents, it'll be a much easier way to go. So, um, looking forward to that and then, so I, it looks like I'm gonna be able to fund that with this year's project. I did give you, because I know transportation is hugely important here with all the growth that we've had. Uh, on your pages, I gave you a sheet on, uh, on transportation projects. Sometimes I think that y'all don't know all the different projects that we're involved in, now I want you to see it in actual writing. So I put this, Jerry helped me put this spreadsheet together today for you. Starting out the top of this, you can see Sage McCurdy and Thirty-One W intersection, where even though I haven't shown it, other type of work is construction. The construction work is done, we're just finishing out some fun, some of the funding side of it and once that's done. We had a little bit of a cost overrun with the, uh, some of the materials that went into it, so I'm, we're beginning with our bond company to see how much of that they're gonna pay, which we hope all of it, but it, so we're waiting to see how it comes out. But anyways, these just kind of show you what, whether, whether a project has been funded, whether it's expected that the city will pay for, or the state or federal is gonna pay for it, or if a developer is contributing to it. So there are quite a few projects here on this list, but I know when I, when you hear me talk, I talk about one or two projects at a time. But really, I'm actively involved in all these projects Jason and I are, in trying to find ways to, to fund them or, you know, trying to push developers to, to do some of these things. I think like the Union Road intersection, you know, we're, we're turn signals, but the traffic signals are supposed to be done by a developer. Uh, and then we look at Tyree Springs, and we have the developer doing a hundred percent of these improvements in these different intersections. So, um, we anticipate those to be coming up. So there's, there's quite a few improvements that are taking place and will be taking place over the next year, more than just what you see here. Plus we set aside, we get the State Street aid, almost a half million dollars to repave roads. We try to do that every year, put three, four, five hundred thousand, five, five hundred thousand dollars in repaving roads to keep us up with our maintenance projects too. So that's what we have going on with roads, uh, and engineering, is there any questions for me on that? If not, we'll, we're gonna move on down the road, we have a lot to cover here with these departments. Uh, building maintenance, that's another area of responsibility of Derek. So Derek, what, tell us what's going on there?
Um, the only one line, uh, that kind of went, uh, increased is the repair of, uh, maintenance of facilities was two sixty under contractual services. That is our loan contract, um, with Wade's Lawn Service. Uh, their contract is coming up, um, in February, so I just patent that account just in case, um, the bids come in higher than expected, which I'm, I'm assuming they probably will. Other than that, the capital project's down, um, on the Mountain River line, uh, so pole mounted decorations, um, we budgeted fifty thousand this year. Some of those did not, uh, we got half of them, which is the reeds, we're still awaiting the snow plates, so the snow plates won't be, uh, delivered until September. So that's moving over. And we're gonna, also, the two, uh, intersections that we did not get, we're gonna try to get those, um, since they were being worked on and stuff, to try and get those up in, with the decorations as well. And then we should be having all of them, but maybe Tyree Springs, um, without lights. Um, outdoor Christmas tree, um, that is fifty thousand, uh, we're, we're gonna try to get a new, uh, outdoor Christmas tree, um, to replace the one that we currently have. Um, the library coffee shop appliances, um, I know it's in the library, but the coffee shop itself and we, it's still, it's part of the contract. So there's one that's for sure that we're thinking of the dishwasher that needs to be replaced, and that's around like four thousand dollars, uh, that it's commercial for you. Uh, so I've had, I've increased it a little bit just to get the dishwasher, the, uh, undercounter ice machine and the, um, refrigerator. So that's replacing all of them.
Do we, we rent that out to them?
We do rent that out, yes, sir.
You don't have to pay?
Um, so they pay, they cover utilities, um, so that's just, that's one fifty a month is what they cover.
Hundred dollars?
Hundred fifty dollars a month?
Right, it's what they, sorry. We started out just trying to encourage people to use it, the one that library was first built, and then, uh, I think we were just got somebody in there and we were charging them the one, the next one came, when Lobs took over on it, then we started charging them, I think it was a hundred, then we moved it up to a hundred fifty.
Yeah, we moved it to utilities, it was a dollar or something, it wasn't even anything when it first got, just so they can be successful.
Yeah.
And then we started implementing the covering utilities for right now.
And they keep all the, the sales are all?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we haven't worked out the other agreement. So far, they haven't moved out, they've been, I'm not sure what their sales are, we could probably take a look at that and see if that's something we need to increase.
Yeah.
And I think I'll, I'll make a note, and I think, Jason, did you put like the, the capital project at the, at the end of their packets? At the end of their packets? You know, the whole list of capital projects and those under twenty-five?
No, they don't have that.
You know, okay. Basically, there was, uh, several projects that they, we go over every year with our, with the staff, uh, projects under twenty-five thousand, that's why you'll see like the library coffee shop appliances, security cameras, City Hall. I, I did not deny any of their projects, some of them are tied to grants, uh, but I did not deny any of them, uh, that they have here. So you'll see those as they go through their budgets, uh, you'll see those, those small increments in their under nine-hundred line, which is a capital line. We go by capital if it's, if it's got, uh, if it's over a five thousand dollar value and it has a three-year life expectancy or more. And that's why we have to tie it into the nine-hundred lines, our rule that we use. So anything else, Derek?
Uh, just the last one is the security cameras, when we got into the building, um, there's some, uh, major blind spots, uh, with the security cameras, so we're gonna, uh, get some cameras, um, to film those blind spots. Um, we're hoping they'll come in under that, um, and then we can try to at least attempt to get this room where, where we want it with the live streaming and stuff, so. And that's all I have in there building, and if there's much else, any questions?
All right, we'll move on to the next page, which is our miscellaneous contingency account, and that has to do with our insurance, security, our risk management, and those funds are there. And Jason, um, works with our department, Carol Stern handles all of our risk management, and then Jason programs those numbers in there for us. So that's what we're anticipating paying next year for our insurance. So that's really it, that's what it is. Municipal court, uh, the next one, Jason?
Uh, we don't have any significant increases in court. It's, it's pretty straightforward on every year, it's not much, not much difference. So I don't, I don't think we've had a court capital project since I've been here, and I don't foresee that being something that we need. Um, on the finance section, uh, the biggest, uh, increase or change, uh, is in the, the two-hundred line, the contractual services. You'll see that it was, uh, roughly eighty-eight thousand budgeted and projected to be spent this year, and we're going to a hundred thousand next year. And the reason for that is that there's several, um, several contractual services involved in that one line. Uh, we project some cost increase for several of those, notably, uh, the audit. It goes up every year, and that's a significant portion of that line. Uh, but we also, we're, we're being mandated by the state to, um, convert our charter of accounts, which is these GL lines, um, on the, on the left here. It's, these are expenses, is what you're looking at on this page, but expenses, revenues, uh, assets, liabilities, uh, all of our charter of accounts have to be converted over to a standardized charter, charter of accounts, and that's every city in, in the state has to do that. The counties already do that, now they're making this, the cities do it as well. And it, as part of that legislation, we actually have to have our auditors either look at it, what we've done, or do it themselves. And there's no significant cost difference between us doing it and then paying them to look at it versus just having them do it themselves. So the cost for that is estimated around five thousand dollars in addition from what we paid last year to what we're gonna pay this year. Also, um, we factored in that when you have grant expenditures that exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you have to have what's called a single audit done. Uh, and the cost for that's anywhere between three and five thousand dollars per program, so how many ever grants we have that, that fall into that category, we would have to pay you that three to five thousand dollars additionally. That, basically what a single audit is, so their, their audit, the whole thing works on statistics and numbers, and that's how they know what to test overall. And then they test per fund, and then they have to break it down even further when they have those seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant expenditures. They have to basically treat that as its own little test subject, and they have to do samples and testing and everything just on that, those items by themselves. Uh, and they charge extra for that, of course. Also, uh, our software, we anticipate our software costs to go up slightly, so there's, that's, that's what makes up that twelve thousand dollar difference. That should be the only significant item in there, uh, that stands out in, in the finance section.
Thank you, Jason. Amanda, you come up, you talked about the personnel services, and I forgot to mention it, with Derek, he's getting, uh, hiring another maintenance person, right? Part of mine that will start January.
January, sir.
So I just wanted to make sure you understood that. Amanda's responsible for pretty much all these personal service lines except for two, can you explain that?
Um, I am in charge of handling all of the ones that are the personal services except for, um, employment, education, and training and overtime. Overtime I'm not responsible for because each department knows best what, how much overtime they're gonna need in order to cover their shifts every year. And employee education training falls under it, the same thing, because they each handle their own education and training day, so I would have no clue how to budget those. Um, everything else, I keep a running spreadsheet, and it's gotten to be massive at this point, that helps me estimate all of those costs. But I handle those for all of the budgets throughout, um, across everything for all the department is. As far as increases to my individual budget for human resources, um, for contractual services, there was a significant increase. The big reasons for that were the, um, estimated cost for the salary study. Jason Hanks, our IT consultant, recommended that we upgrade our antivirus security this year, which is gonna be a significant increase. One of those reasons is, Jerry and I have been discussing, we want to get the, um, cybersecurity insurance, and there's a lot of minimum requirements that we have to have for that, and we don't meet those right now. These, some of the changes, increases in IT costs this year are moving us in that direction. Um, it's also time for us to do the retired help study, actuarial study that we're required by law to do every two years. So that cost is in there this year, or for next year that isn't in there for this year. Um, my postage went up significantly, but one of the reasons is we are doing quarterly help mailers to all of our employees now, little postcards, kind of telling them, hey, you need to make sure you get this done, or if you know your benefits include this. And we're sending them to the house in the hopes that in some households spouses are, tend to be more in charge of healthcare than necessarily the employees, just to make sure everyone gets that information. Memberships and registrations did not go up significantly. Um, meals and entertainment went up mostly for increases due inflation for health and safety fare food costs. This year we were able to squeak in under budget, but next year we'd like to do something a little bit extra for that. Um, we've done the same thing now, I think, going on seven years, so we would kind of like to upgrade that a little bit. And the only other one that increased is operating supplies. Um, again, a large cost of that was for health engagement material. Um, we're trying to encourage our employees to be active in their healthcare because that does decrease our overall healthcare costs every year. Uh, replacement computer, a lot of departments plan for those every year, but with only three people in my department, it's like once every five years, we have to budget for that. And the other big thing, um, that I had asked Jerry for was replacement for the patio furniture up on the third floor. It's all metal and dark colored, so in the summertime it's completely unusable because you sit down and, you can pretty much haul the crap out of yourself when you sit down at it. Um, so we're hoping to get either plastic or some that have umbrellas built into them so that our employees will be able to use those at lunchtime and on their breaks.
The ones that we have, or the parks will make use of them, I'm sure.
Yes, yes, sir. It'll either go to parks, or if, um, Elizabeth has used one at the library, that was another thought that we had, so.
Okay, so I, I guess, and when any, when, the wrestling department is, when you get up, if you have a personnel that was added or two, or wherever, if you could let the council know that, that's, that's, you don't have to do all of them. All right, we'll move on to, uh, police patrol, chief.
Uh, not, not too many changes, I'll go over some ones that have increased, um, but the overtime, as you'll see in police patrol, uh, line one twelve, uh, it's kind of, uh, about thirty, twenty-five thousand dollars for that. We are getting a new employee in July, one in January, um, so we are hoping to be fully staffed, which would be put us at twenty-seven officers. Um, minimum staffing, court time, anything that goes with that, um, increase in salaries. Cause that to go over?
Chief, I, I know this is kind of off subject, but kind of on subject, the, because it's making it ask, the board members, they get this question from the community. I've noticed that I've been signing several, um, off-duty employment for your police officers to work at the Christian Community School.
Correct.
And White House, that, just, just, how, how do they get paid for that?
That, they are paid through the school, that has nothing to do with the city, I made it clear. Um, when they took that on, they're gonna, they wanted to do to White House officers, you know, in the school year, um, and the officers were to do it. I made it clear it was not to be through the police department, um, and if there's a day that there's nobody to staff to, we will not staff anyone, our officers, so.
Yeah, our priorities are, are city.
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted everybody to know, in case people ask me if we're not paying for an officer to be over there, we're, we're not.
Not at all. Um, under small items, equipment, you'll see that, uh, that went down fifteen thousand dollars. Sergeant Brison, um, who was the Middle Tennessee Coordinator, uh, when he left to go work for the THSO, uh, we used to get a grant for fifteen thousand dollars for equipment, um, and that went away when he went away. So that's why that was down. Um, you'll see three twenty-six in clothing uniforms went up, about thirty-four thousand dollars, that's a one hundred percent funded grant, um, that will be getting tax vests for all the officers keeping the trunks. Um, so that's a, you know, one hundred percent reimbursable grant. Uh, CID overtime went down, um, we had an officer that we were getting basically a grant through the FBI for overtime, um, that they were reimbursing us for. Um, we're no longer participating in that, so that overtime went away with that. Repair maintenance of buildings, um, fifty-five thousand dollars, our building is now over twenty years old, and our heating air unit is starting to act up a little bit. Um, the average life expectancy, we were told is about eighteen years, so we're pretty much on borrowed time, so we're gonna be trying to start a replacement, uh, program once a year.
Uh, we're getting one new firefighter this year, bringing us up to three shifts of shit, three shifts of seven. See that ten times fast. Uh, the only thing, uh, on our one forty-eight line, the employee education training, uh, a little bit. Uh, we've got some, uh, pretty, uh, some good go-getters out there that are finding all these trains and wanting to go to Indiana, Illinois, and go take advantage of these, uh, these opportunities. So, that's, that's mostly where that increase came from.
Fire academy, no, no, but your firefighter, your first one is actually gone through an academy.
Yes. Friday, we'll have our first firefighter graduate, the Tennessee Fire and消防 Academy, ten-week course, it's the first one the city's ever had, so. Kind of a big, it's actually kind of their valedictorian, so.
Oh, wow.
We're gonna be making a trip down to the fire academy. Uh, then on the nine hundred line, I think I have two things. Got a hundred thousand dollars for rescue pumper, and this is basically to get the ball rolling. The lead time on, on a fire engine now is almost three years. So, this will get us locked in on price, get us in the queue, get the trucks start getting built, and then when it's done, we'll pay the balance. So, that'll, that'll lock that price in, and then, uh, ten thousand dollars for replacing large diameter fire hoses, which is almost twenty years old. And then over on the admin side, no real big changes. Uh, the operating supply, the three twenty line, that's, we've got a lot of smaller projects like, uh, drag dummies, gas detectors, um, a lot of little things that are gonna come out of that line. Our metal supplies went out of that line, so we saw a little bit of an increase on that. We've got, uh, some more fire hoses that we need to buy, uh, out of that line. And then on the nine hundred, the fire inspector vehicle to carry over. All of our facilities are in need of some major attention as far as, uh, like our, our, station one is old. It's just, it's, it was never designed to serve this long. Station two, there again, everybody calls it the new station, but it's thirteen, fourteen years old. We're having problems with fire alarms, sprinkler systems, HVAC, um, all that good stuff that comes with a building that's getting older. Uh, and then our training tower's really been neglected over the last thirteen years, so we're, uh, gonna get it, get it back up to par. It's got some serious rust issues where it was never painted. Uh, the roof is leaking, which we're actually trying to get done this budget year. Uh, and then the vehicle exhaust system, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for that. This is to make our vehicle exhaust go left side, leave it completely away from the station and, uh, reduce the cancer risk with firefighters, one in five firefighters each year, so. Unless you see something, any questions about it?
Okay, probably for, uh, Wendy.
So, basically, uh, professional services, pretty much, it went up a little bit. Um, again, it's with salaries because we're hiring a, uh, a public work inspector, uh, July first, so we count for that. Uh, contractual services, uh, our line went up seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Uh, some of the outliers, our contractual services went up twenty-three hundred bucks. Uh, electric went up five thousand, and repair and maintenance vehicles went up two thousand. And then with the material, materials and supplies, it went up six thousand four hundred dollars. And the one that went up there was operating supplies, and clothing and uniform went up a little bit. Uh, I told all the managers, or my managers, that this year, if they wanted to get their employees some jackets for the winter time, they're allowed to do that, but I said make sure you budget for it. So, they all up their, uh, uniform line. And capital, uh, we won't, we went up a little bit this year. Uh, we actually had a dump truck, but then, um, we also had three items that I, uh, kinda approved through Jerry. It was the walk-behind concrete saw, a rock breaker for the, for skids deer, and a concrete mixer for the skids deer. So, that kinda inflated our, um, overall capital line up a little bit. But we're in that, that was pretty much in a nutshell.
Well, then we can go to Elizabeth's library.
Okay, um, I only have a few lines that have increased, so my part-time wages, line one fourteen, that has went up a little bit, partly because we are getting busier. Um, more people are coming in, making cars, checking out items, so we do need a lot of extra help. Also, the one forty-eight line, that's employee education and training, that went up because I have another employee, uh, wanting to take up the image of our college program so they're going back to school. And if you drop down, let's see, subscriptions, uh, dues went up, uh, actually, no, it's not go, sorry, go down further. Electric went up because we are making some adjustments to our, um, heating and cooling system. Um, and also the water went up because we are adding more sprinklers, uh, to the reading guard, and that's the price we're trying to make, so that's gonna go up a little bit. Um, so those are the main line items, and then you jump down to the nine hundred capital. So, I have two projects in there, so the library storage shelving, that's a carryover item from last year. Um, our storage shelves, we didn't really actually have right storage shelves when we built the library, so, uh, they're not really safe, and we were going to replace them, but we didn't this year because we just had TCRS and other expenses, so we moved that, uh, to pay for that, so this is a carryover. And then last year also, um, I got an IDU services librarian, and then we changed the circulation clerk to a door services librarian, so I don't actually have, uh, space for them to adequately perform their job. So, I'm asking for, um, funds to buy the proper type of desks for them to do their work. So, that's pretty much all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Linda. Kevin, you're up, senior services.
All right, um, uh, I guess the, really the only thing in senior services is just, uh, the contractual services line went up quite a bit, and that's all due to, um, just the meals, uh, that we have. Uh, we've seen a significant increase in the participation, which is a good thing. Uh, it just costs us more money, the, the more people that come, it costs us more money, so. So, hopefully you budgeted enough to account for what our average is now, uh, because we're getting probably a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty people, uh, each time, so. So, that pretty, oh, the only other thing I wanted to mention was I had like a thousand dollars in her operating supplies, um, because she'd like to get a little fireplace down there and to add the, the senior center down next to the duck, that'd be nice to do. But that's all I have in senior services.
Museum?
We'll move to museum. All right, uh, really there's not much in the museum, uh, this changed it all. The only thing that really mentioned is, um, we're gonna do an HVAC replacement for the upstairs, uh, and that's a cap line. So, then we did the, uh, kinda like the main marina area, we replaced that HVAC unit, uh, this, like, year. And we'll have one or two more that we have to do, uh, after that, because when we did the renovation, uh, that was one thing that didn't get done, was replacing the HVAC units, so that's what we're doing now. We'll move to, uh, Parks admin. All right, uh, I guess I'll just mention from the top, we, uh, have a full-time, uh, don't really know what to call it yet, but events coordinator, superintendent that we're gonna add. Uh, the thought behind that is just trying to get enough full-time before the rec center is here, uh, so that we're prepared for that, and we don't have to add a bunch of positions at once, so. And then we also have added a part-time, uh, Parks attendant, same thought process with that as well. Although we can use it, so. So, just the individual lines, contractual services is, um, is the first one that stands out. It went up quite a bit because I'm actually giving more than that because I moved three thousand dollars from that and put it into our advertising because I had program guys in there, uh, and I thought it was more appropriate to come out of advertising, so, um, really you're probably looking at around a ten thousand dollar increase. Uh, that's mostly due to referees, uh, we have to pay for those, and, uh, of course, our programs are growing every year. Uh, and so those, not only do the referee fees increase, but then it increases because we have more kids, more games, so, just the way that that works. And we also wanted to add in this year, uh, we wanted to pay for the cost of the coaches, uh, the clinics that we make them go through, their online clinics. We're having a really tough time finding coaches, which is a thing that we've dealt with for years, but it's even harder now. Plus the fact that we turn around and tell them, you gotta pay twenty-five dollars to go through this clinic, uh, it just makes it really difficult, so, uh, we just wanted to cover the cost for that in our registration, so. Which I already talked about, advertising, that went up a little bit because I moved something into that, uh, that was in contractual services, uh, previously. Uh, repair and maintenance facilities went up quite a bit. Um, one of those is a few thousand dollars to, um, Linda would like more cabinets up above where she is. Uh, you know, she's got a lot filed, and so, um, she needs people, more room to store stuff, which is that. Uh, and then we also added money in to, uh, cover the desks and shelves and stuff like that for our new employee that'll be down there, so that's what that is. And then operating supplies, uh, that's kind of a catch-all line because, I mean, you're talking all kinds of equipment that we have to get. Um, of course, we get our trophies, we get our uniforms, and all that kinda stuff out of that line, so more kids and just price increases, that's, that's the reason, you know, falling where we go is up high. Uh, almost ten thousand dollars, so. So, we've got, any questions? All right, park maintenance. Again, contractual services, um, this is just, um, like the, like, uh, I guess our electrical bills, like, uh, our, our electrical contracting, like the, I think we use, we use electric now, but just change the model to the light and stuff like that, that's one of the big ones, uh, that we have to account for, so. But, uh, not only that, but I guess, uh, I think ways, no, that comes out of a different line, but. Uh, this is all a different contractual services, like plumbing, uh, and stuff like that that we, we've had to, uh, account for. Um, nothing big on utilities, I think we're gonna be okay on, like, our water and sewer and all that kind of stuff moving forward, um.
Why is sewer twice as much as it was last year? Is that right?
Uh, there's what else?
Forty-four?
No, it's, um, sorry.
I didn't know that, um, so. Admin, admin.
Oh, yeah, we, we, uh.
Admin covered since we built this building. We thought we were gonna be connected to the splash pad, so, um, and we were, so admin was covering this building and the old city hall building and the splash pad. Uh, now that we moved in this building, we have separate lines, we kinda re-corrected that. Now, parks will be covering parks, which is the old city hall building and splash pad.
Yeah, and I actually may not have to end up spending that much because we actually found out that we were getting charged for sewer over at soccer on our irrigation line, which obviously irrigation, we know we shouldn't have to pay that, so we, we actually won't, that's why, uh, I'm not projecting to spend that much this year because we got a huge kickback from that that we were, uh, doing this year, so. So, it, it may change, but I just wanted to keep it the same just to see how it goes while that's getting worked out, so. Other than that, um, of course, we've got all of our, uh, big projects that come out of, uh, the maintenance budget. We had our, of course, the park master plan, uh, that was, uh, talked about at the budget retreat, uh, reducing our turnbogs, and then just some of the, of course, the recs and then, but, and a couple of projects that weren't included, uh, in that, um, is, we'd like to renovate the signs out of the park, uh, change that, uh, update some of the offerings and the name. And then we also laser grade and top dress all of our baseball and soccer fields on rotation. We don't do all of them every year, um, but, uh, so we need sand and dirt for that, and now we're set up to where we can do the work on our own, we just, now we have to pay for the materials, so that's, that's what that is. I think that's all that we have.
I did double-check really, and I went back and looked at legislative sewer bill, and he, he, I mean, from what they spent in twenty twenty-two, it was six dollars, and Derek's gotta drop down to like twenty-four hundred dollars now, and so it dropped, so. Nice, no, it was actually ten thousand, it dropped down to twenty-four. So, he's, yeah, that's where they crossed, they made the difference. Instead of him paying it, he's paying it now, that's the way that worked out.
Yeah, and if we get, and of course, we did leaks and stuff, which not, which hasn't happened this year, but if we get a few leaked out soccer or something like that, that affects our, uh, our sewer, you know, how it ends with that, so, uh, we shouldn't have to spend that much on sewer, but it's all within, um, what happens that year.
Hi.
And a soccer complex sign, are you just gonna try to refurb that one, or are you gonna put something digital up, or?
We're doing the missile park.
Okay.
You know, but, yeah, we're just gonna put like sign on, uh, it's like this plastic slash metal type of material that'll go over it.
Okay.
It'll, it'll right there with the same.
So, you're just planning and coding.
There's not much significantly changing in my budget from this year to last. The, uh, caper projects are, uh, requesting a, a property maintenance vehicle, and I'm also requesting that we, uh, do a development regulation as we have now. Um, it kinda hodgepodge from changes over time, so I'm requesting that. I just wanna note that, uh, I mentioned, I think in our study session before, that the inter-golf system upgrade is, uh, affecting some, some things that I asked for last year, so that was carryover from last year. Uh, but, uh, the only significant changes, there was zero, we're closing the uniform in my budget over the last couple of years, but the inspectors need some, some uniforms where they have to crawl in their houses or do some, some things that require them doing their job. Uh, so, that was a little change in that. But any other increase reflects the additional employee that I got last year. This will be our full first full year, uh, to date, so, uh, any of those increases reflect that.
Thank you, Caesar. All right, that's one of the fifteen funds, so we'll start with the next one. We, we changed the, this, this fund's name from industrial development fund to the economic development fund. It's basically whole-time, all-time tax that we collect, it's given us from Robertson County, and it can be used for tourism and, and economic development. Uh, they prefer tourism, uh, so, one of the things that we did this year in the budget, you go to, go to the actual, the spreadsheet, um, I don't know, look at your books, I don't know what page number that is.
Twenty-four.
Twenty, okay. The, um, in the, uh, we always give a donation to the, um, to, to the Chamber of Commerce and, and to, and the voluntary state in their, uh, small business, uh, small business, uh, training. That's five hundred dollars, and, and that'll be written up again on a, uh, resolution that you'll see in your junior meeting. Uh, we, we've been wanting to do this visitor center stage coach for, for several years, and we think we finally got the ability to get it done, and we hope we can find a local vendor that would be able to build something like this for us, as a tourism attraction for the, for White House to kinda match our, our emblem. We think it'd be really cool if people stopped there, all wanna get their pictures in front of it and with the house behind it, and, you know, also draw people into our museum and take a look at our museum. The other thing is the Americana, we, we have a, for our, we have our, Americana every year at the soccer complex, for the most part, we, you know, change a few times, but, on my, that's our main site, and we, 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 that, we usually run like a temporary, uh, cable extension, so, for extra power for our stage and, and lighting and that, so we, we wanna put something more permanent over there, so I budgeted some money to, uh, to see if we can get that done this, this, uh, other year, so. That's really all I have in the economic development. Next one is your state, state street aid, is that what's thrown up next, I hope? Okay, state street aid, so we're in the same order, thank you. And your state street aid, uh, this is money comes in from share tax, uh, gas taxes and that that we receive, and maybe we'll get a little bit more of a boost with the electric car, um, condition that's gonna be taken place in the state, they're gonna be grabbing more money from electric car users. But I, I really tried to, to get, uh, the public services department to focus this money specifically on, on asphalt over there for our maintenance program, so this year we have four and sixty-five thousand. So, that way we don't have to also add from the general fund. And so, as you can see, like last year, we had several projects came out of UPS backups and brick smarts, but this year, uh, specific, so it's just strictly for street, because our. because our cost for asphalt is going up and up and up, and so we need that extra money to make sure that we can stay up with our roads. All right, moving on to your park sales tax fund. This is a, this fund basically takes, as I mentioned before, it comes out of our sales tax money, and it takes care of debt services for the, the Byron family park that we have, that we're, we're buying, I think we have a fifteen-year loan on that, we paid, paid a few years down already on that. We're gonna, we're gonna, this year, the money is specifically for a soccer complex, we have a, we have a grant that's worth almost six hundred thousand dollars, and so we're gonna take advantage of that, it's already been designed, ready to go out, I think we almost got all proof from the state, do you think, Kevin, at this point? Pretty much, so we're planning on going out the bid for this probably in July. Hopefully have it under construction in November, December, January, whether or not soccer is done. I'm hoping they'll have it pretty much completed, but the punch was by the time soccer starts back up in the spring, but it's gonna be a nice addition, having that large parking lot lit up. It'll actually meet our code, you know, we're parking here now in violation of our, really, our own code, so we'll get that squared away and taken care of, so. That's park sales tax. Now we get into our formal impact fee fund, which you guys all supported increasing because it really doesn't cover our office service. Certain, you can only purchase certain things with parks, when you with these impact fees, mainly it has to do with adding onto a department, not, not replacing things that need to be replaced, like a police guard needs to be replaced, I just can't replace it, but since he's adding two officers, we're able to go ahead and add, add something there. So, your first one, park sales tax, the park impact fee, we're looking at funding a maintenance building lean-to, which is an addition, something they wanna do to be able to park some of their lawn mowers and some of their other equipment under it, out to city, city parks. And then we have a parks truck that is gonna be added on, because they, the one that they have is getting wore out, but we still can utilize it, so we're gonna pick up another truck to take and have, have it for their usage. That takes care of that. And even, I guess, I should have been showing you, at the beginning of your sheets, you can see that we're doing really good on our actual operating revenues. When you look at the police impact fee, our funding, our fund balance is expected to be about eight or thirty thousand dollars, which is good, I'm glad we're saving money in that particular count, because we're gonna, one day we're gonna have to expand that police department, it was built twenty-something years ago, and, you know, it's gonna have to be, as he's grown his department, and there are probably ten officers more than they had back then when it was built, so we're, we're gonna eventually have to do some improvements to add on, so I'm hoping we can continue saving some money for that project coming up.
Is this considering the impact fee increase that we just, do we, uh?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we anticipated what we're gonna be coming up, so. The, the only thing we're getting out of there is two patrol vehicles this year, out of the capital side of it, and that's just because we, we're gonna do it, they had two more patrol vehicles for the fleet, so we can continue with our take-home policy. Fire impact fees and funds, you see, will be at a hundred and sixty-seven percent, we're at fund balance of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, as you know, you know, that they're looking at eventually building a third fire hall, so we wanna make sure we continue to build that fund up. The, what we're, we will actually be paying for this year out of it, we have a couple of things, we, I put aside land acquisition, two hundred and fifty thousand. We reached out to developer, I mean, to, to landowners all around that area that we'd like to see a possible third station, and we've only one respond back yet so far, without a price on the property, it's a little bit, I think they have five acres, and we really are only looking for like two acres, but it might be in a good location where we could possibly utilize some of that other land, but, anyway, we, we haven't started negotiating yet with, with any property ownership of, of land. So, we're setting that aside, we have rescue airbags, that was, he needs, he needs to improve and add some rescue airbags for his department, he probably explained better with that. Explain that with a better perspective.
It's for heavy lifting, basically tractor-trailer accidents, things of that nature where we need to lift really, really heavy things. They're just, power bearers, pretty incredible, we can use our, our breathing air tanks hooked to it, and we can lift some of the airbags, we can lift up to a foot, and then make some that are even bigger than that, but we'll, we'll, it's, it's not something that we use every day, but when you need it, you really, really need it.
And then we're getting an extrication, extrication combination tool, which is, again, we've been trying to update their equipment, they even got battery-operated, what I call jaws of life, that's what this is. You know, I had a really good compliment from our team, went up and helped out up north of here when we had a fatal crash a week ago. A gentleman from Portman lost his life in about, I think it was a five-vehicle, multi-vehicle crash. One of our local residents was right there, seeing what was happening, couldn't, just was just in shock and amazed, and I guess how, how well our fire department is working together with the other firefighters that were showing up and assisting, and, and I, and I said, that's what they train for, these guys train all the time, they got great tools, I seen it one day, we had like six vehicles sitting out back, I stopped by there, see some of the training you guys were doing, it was pretty amazing, having the cars, how you guys can tow them on your side, how you can get people out of vehicles, just pretty impressed, that's why we keep up with the equipment we pay out, so. Road impact fee, this is the one that, you know, we can use for our main artery roads, if we have improvements to be made, and, and, you know, we're, we're expecting to have a five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar fund balance at the end of the year. This year, I've, I've set aside five hundred thousand dollars to help with the stage road widening, widening from Madeline Cardinal. I hope we get that off the bid sometime in July, to get that started as soon as we can, if the bids come back okay. The, next one is the police drug fund, that's not one of those funds that we get from like, if they, if you get charged with marijuana in your car, or if you get a citation and that, they, the court can order that so much of the money goes to the police drug fund, but it's very restrictive on what we can use it for, and so we've been kind of building up. We use it for our dare program, buy supplies for Eric Ginklin, he's in teaching the kids, you know, the drug prevention program, and he'll get T-shirts and that type of thing, and we could also use it, it's kind of odd, we can use it for, for the fingerprint machines that they use at the two-county jails to book people in. So, they, they charge all the, all the cities that contribute prisoners to their facilities, they charge us a fee every year, so that helps pay for that fee. But we can also do something else, which we, we did receive this year from our drug task force, the AT drug task force, they gave us some money to, to purchase a K nine, so we put that in our budget, in our, into our drug fund, so we, we can, we're gonna get a dual-purpose K nine with equipment, so that's again, fifteen thousand of it, it came directly from the drug task force, from a, from a crime that was solved years ago. Debt service fund, I'll let, Jason, he does a great job of that, so I'll let him explain anything there. Jason, go ahead.
The debt service fund, we, we try to maintain a balance of twenty-five percent of a five-year average of what the expenses are gonna be for debt services. I calculate that based off of actual amortization schedules that we have, and everything that we have in this, in this fund that we're gonna be paying for is pretty well set in stone for the, with the exception of the twenty-four million dollar bond for the rec center. I used a draw schedule that the contractor provided for us, and it kind of shifted it based off of their delays. And right now, we're, of the twenty-four million dollars we've, we've drawn as of actually today, we've got a little over a million dollars drawn out of that, and I anticipate to draw another sixteen million dollars before the end of next fiscal year. And, and what that's coming to cost us, that plus the other notes and, and bonds that we have, principal and interest, we're looking at about two-point-four million dollars next year in costs, and this year, we're about one-point-two. And the significant increase in that is this building here was eleven million dollar bond, that's all been drawn down, so we're paying interest on all of that at this point. And like I said, the, the twenty-four million dollars, so those, those are by far the two biggest pieces of debt that we have that are affecting general fund. And then we have the twenty-twenty refunding bond, which was, for the twenty-thirteen bond, which was used for the library. We have a few years left for the twenty-fifteen bond that was a refunding.
Let me refresh them too, there was a handout that I gave you that was stapled, and if, you'll see City of White House Tennessee schedule long-term debt governmental activities, and let me, let me run through this real quick with them. As you can see, we have, starting out with that two thousand thirteen series, which is, which is coming off the books this year, that was at three-point-nine-nine percent. The, the next one, the two thousand fifteen series, you can see that goes until two thousand twenty-eight. We're running between two and three percent on that as a variable rate. The next one is the waterline note, and that's a two-point-five-five percent, and that's, that's starting to work its way down. And then the next one would be the library, which we have a pretty good rate on that, one-point-seven percent, the three percent variable rate on that. And you can see the schedule, which is kind of like what you're referring to, this comes right out of your audit book. The Byron Park, that comes out of park sales tax, so that's, it, it actually, it doesn't show up in this debt schedule that he has right here, because it's in the park sales tax debt schedule. And then the community center, which you can see we added on, which did add a significant amount of debt for us this year to start paying on. Direct Center is the, is the last one on that line, and you can see we just started into that process, so for the next twelve to eighteen months, that's gonna, he'll be able to fill all those in, I know what those schedules are gonna be, so we'll probably see that next year's audit, and then get that to it. I just wanted to make you aware, but the other one is, is gonna be your wastewater, but we can talk about that later when we get to wastewater. Anything else? Jason, I have that fund?
I don't, I don't think I have anything else to add to that.
Okay. Kevin, get you back up here again, you got a lot of funds, cemetery fund.
Yeah, there's not really anything that I've changed in the cemeteries this year. There's no, there's no capital projects either, just kind of saving a little money there this year. If you got questions, there's really no major changes at all.
Yeah, I mean, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand protecting in our fund balance, and, you know, we're gonna need that down the road, there's gonna be a day when that, that cemetery is full, and we're, we're stuck with the cost of maintaining that lawn and, and, you know, paying that every year, so it's gonna be good that we have, uh, pocket our money for that purpose down the road. Thank you. Amanda, so we're gonna do the dental care fund.
So, I've got a question.
Yeah.
Which cemetery is this?
It's the, the one just to the south of us.
Right here? It's not north, right?
Right, right.
No, it's right next to it.
Yeah, the Hill Crest Cemetery, one of the nice hunting in the front, and that's real right here in town center. That was donated to us years and years ago, family. You maintain it.
Um, our dental care fund is self-funded, it's not one that we send, that we have a actual provider for, it is administered by Delta Dental, and every year, we provide so much money, we cover a hundred percent of the employee costs of their dental, and they pay, if they have employee child, employees' vows or family, they pay a rate based on those particular levels of coverage. Several years, Jason brought to mind, and Jerry, the tension, that our fund had grown to a very large amount of money, and there was no reason for us to continue to put quite so much money into it per employee, per month, to cover those costs. So, for what, the last three years, I believe, Jason, we lowered what we put into there to cover the employee-only cost to five dollars a month, so we significantly lowered it. It was, I believe, thirty-seven dollars a month previously. Lowered it to five dollars a month to bring that fund balance down significantly, and now we're just moving back to forty dollars a month for each employee, just to get back to where we're supposed to be, maintaining our expenditures every year. And it may be tweaking a little bit over the next two or three years until Jason and I figure out what the exact wide bound is. The forty dollars a month, I believe, will give us two years' worth of expenditures and revenues, so that's why we chose that for. And that is across all of the funds, so you'll see, you'll see the budget later, and know if there's an increase in the dental fund line across all the budget lines we're back for.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna get into what we call the enterprise funds, self-funded based on user fees. And we'll start off with, do you have wastewater next?
No.
No?
Sorry, Gary.
That's all right. sanitation, nice?
It's sanitation, then wastewater, and stormwater.
Yes, we're good, we're good, that's okay. Sanitation fund, so Andy, Andy's got all, all three of these enterprise funds, so. I will mess on this one, there will be, we're recommending a fee increase, that's up to you all, but, because we've been tapping into our fund balance the last several years, our nineteen dollars just was not enough to hold for the increases we've added in our recycling cost and our red trash, uh, trash dumping. So, we're, we're proposing to go up to twenty-four dollars, we've had the, obviously, we've approved a contract with
GFL.
GFL, which as of today was purchased by Waste Management. So, interesting though, because we got the lower price, Waste Management bit higher on the sealed package.
But they're honoring-
But they're gonna honor the GFL prices, I think we did good on that, in that regard, so.
You said we exceptionally well, because they would not have agreed to that, so we got lucky.
Yeah, so we're, we're recommending a, a five-dollar increase in this particular fund, they haven't increased it in several years.
Otherwise, it would've been nine dollars for the next lowest bidder.
Yeah.
It's a five-year contract?
It's a sixty-month, yes, sir.
For the five-year renewables.
But they have to redo it every year, ninety-eight prior to, so I had kind of the budget two-point-five percent increase. So, basically here, we kept the number pretty even keel, so obviously it went up to a ninety thousand dollars on our contractual services because of the price. Nothing we could do there. Then the materials and supplies went up two thousand five hundred and twenty bucks, and that was your operating supply, and some fuel, you could use the fuel a little bit, and then for capitals, we actually went down fifteen thousand five hundred bucks, and we carried over the truck, because when we bid it out this year, it came, it came a little bit over budget, so we went ahead and just pushed it for this year, plus we didn't know how the contractor to come back at, so. Other than that, it's, that's the, that's the one.
Okay, wastewater, then?
Yes, I know.
We'll start with wastewater, and I just want to preface again, we, to keep up with the requirements of the water wastewater board, and we continue to have our operating revenue to exceed our expenditures year after year, we've been recommended years ago to, if we keep about three percent increase, we should be fine, and we have been, I mean, not gotten any trouble with the water wastewater board, and of course, it's helping us to be able to pay off some of our, our, our current needs as they come up, and so we're recommending a three percent increase to do next year. So, that's what we'll see in the budget here, the revenue stream. Go ahead.
So, personal services went up quite a bit, but we were down with three collections of employees this year. We're hiring one more hopefully next year after January, so that line went up a little bit. The contractual services, the biggest hit here was the two-hundred line, once again, our contractual services. That's for engineering services, so we have a multitude of things going on, obviously, so they gotta review every single plan that comes through our office. Repair maintenance facilities went up a little bit, and the repair maintenance equipment went up a little bit. Again, we're gonna be hiring another employee, employees, because we have an interview, I think it's kind of for this week or next week, for our collective employee. So, that went up a little bit there. Again, like everyone else, buildings are getting old, we gotta do maintenance to them. The materials, materials and supplies line went up eight thousand three hundred dollars, the biggest one there was the, was the uniform line, and again, because of the jackets and what have you, you've got fifteen, I think, employees there, thirteen or fifteen, depending on some quits, so that's gonna be a little hit there. Then the capital improvements, the wastewater expansion, that's four million five hundred, that's SRF. And then the, we have an internal lift station, found to be in disrepair, and with our new design, I think we'll keep up with the flows, so we're gonna get that replaced this year to help us with our compliance issues. Another, that's tip for treatment.
Okay.
With collections, again, that line went up a little bit, because I failed to mention, on the, on the human side, we are hiring an operator this year, so that's why that line went up. The collection side, went up a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, again, we're hiring another collections person. We, we were three short this year, so I hope we can be fully staffed by the end of the year. The contractual services line, this one went up about nine percent, sixty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty bucks. The biggest one was facility maintenance and repair and the water line. Like Kevin said earlier, it might sound kind of funny, but sometimes we do get water breaks, and we don't know right away, so it's always an increase, it seems like it's been happening here lately. And then collections with repair maintenance equipment, it went up too, because we're getting more trucks, so. Capital, that went down fifty-five thousand, or materials and supplies went down fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. The biggest one that went down was inventory and supplies, so went from two-twenty last year to one-forty-five this year. So, we're trying to save money where we can, but gotta put money where needed to be, so we kind of just stuck with numbers around there.
Your, your capital demand, for your, your, AT is Southern Forest Main, did you touch on that? I think it's on your, on your collection side.
So we had the grind post as well, that's five hundred fifty bucks, which is pretty standard every year. And then, uh, where is it?
The back trailer, we, we noticed today too, when we were talking with you, about, went up from ninety thousand one seventy-five.
Yeah, in the phase four, uh, we budgeted two point nine million based off our engineering estimates. And then the back trailer, one seventy-five, that went up. So last year, I think they were kind of re getting the budget, but it's not definitely what we wanted. So I told this developer to be safe, and then repay metal arc, which is an everlasting gas stopper that hasn't happened yet. I think since the third year carryover on this road.
Yeah, it's just a matter of whether or not the developers are going to develop the, the common, if we do develop it, we're, you know, we may end up having to do that line ourselves.
He runs, he runs sewer main down through there. So those are already a lot of days. We can't ask him to put a new road in, so that's, we'll put the road in, so.
Yeah.
Once he tears it out. Sorry about that, Kevin.
I guess our last one then would be our stormwater one.
Stormwater fund, the biggest increase you see here in personal services is, um, the education line. Uh, we work from seven to nine.
No, no increase in stormwater, and we haven't done that in several years, so we're going to keep that the same. Our growth is man, is bringing enough money to manage that department's volume.
Well, we save money at the bottom to help put the top up here, so basically, to get a CELO now, about seven thousand dollars per employee. Uh, we want to send three guys, so that went up twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. But then if you go to contractual services, we went down twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars, so we kind of saved some money there. We were over budget on a few items. Uh, everything went down, basically from the two hundred line, the two eleven line went down, two thirty-five went down, two thirty-seven went down. Uh, two sixty-one went down, two sixty-two went down. That's what we saved the money. Then under materials and supplies, uh, we, we went down three thousand dollars, so we saved a little bit of money there as well. And then for capital, uh, the one thing we got budgeted this year is for the Fox River project, that's, uh, kind of like a carryover. Uh, we didn't have the money last year in the budget, so we got to finish off Apache this year, so we'll bin that out this year and get that finished. We'll have the product, we just got to bin out installation.
Okay, the only things that, I, I don't think they have the, what we cut out of the project list that Jason, they don't have that list either, right?
No.
Okay. I'll just kind of tell you, under State Street, uh, A, we cut out a mini track favor, that was sixty-five thousand, that was requested, we probably could hold off on. Um, fire department, we, we took the Opticon traffic management system out, which scored very low on our scoring system, a hundred and twenty thousand there. Wyden North Palmer Chaparral, I just felt like the page road is a higher priority for us right now. So that was, uh, six hundred thousand dollars they cut out there. Directional signs for the admin department, we're, we're definitely going to cut that out. We're going to see if we can scope something small and start out. See what, what kind of pattern, what kind of design we might want. And then, uh, the dog park parking lot, pulled a hundred thousand out for that. We're, what I've asked Jason to do, once we get our soccer complex done the following year under park sales tax, I'm hoping we can fund three, three small projects that the parking kind of fish, fish out. We need a bathroom facility, we need a, a parking lot by the dog park, and we need the concession at standard by the quads. And we have to do some renovation in the district building there. And then, uh, I took nine hundred thousand dollars out of a million dollar fire truck. So, because I figured it's going to be three years before we get it, or almost three years, two and a half years, you know, we, we could at least get a deposit down to start the project. So that's what we cut out in order for us to get to the twenty-six percent that we have. Um, so that's, that's pretty much our budget in a nutshell. Um, Mayor, thank you for allowing us to present our budget to you, and, uh, our next thing for us to do would be to prepare our budget ordinance, which we'll have to have done early next, by early next week, right, Monday, Tuesday, so that we can get that into the budget. And so we can get into your agenda packets for your next following week, so that's what we have, unless there's anything else that you all would like to discuss or talk about, or make any, any change on, if you can use.
Do you have any questions?
No. No, 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 this is a study session, there's no motion to be made here. That'll be in your, your audit, your May.
I do want to say, I, I needed Amanda to tag it that he was talking about the cut, the project, the cut projects from CIP. First thing I have Amanda getting copies.
Oh, okay. So you'll have that, and you'll see what we put in, there's three different pages to it, I would take right there.
Yes.
We have the full capital projects, all the, all those capital projects that you all reviewed at your budget retreat, that you'll see in there. And then you'll see the, all the ones under twenty-five thousand, twenty-five, twenty-one, and you see there's quite a list there. That was all in the budget approved, and you'll see what we cut out of the project list to make the budget work for us and, you know, the funds. That's fifteen budgets. Uh, I consider the general fund is the most difficult one, I think, and Waste Water. Uh, those are your two largest budgets in the city that fund pretty much most of what we have. But a lot of things are going to get done next year. There's a lot of things you're going to see get done and improved next year as we go, go through the year, so. Is that something you can talk about now, or?
You can, well, actually, if you want to talk about the list that we have.
Yeah, so the Pleasant Grove Road intersection on Seventy-Six, I think we can all agree, is something that should have probably been done a while ago. We get, I get a ton of complaints at that intersection. I've sat in the traffic myself. Um, and that's something I would like to see us push and get it done this year.
Uh, as you well know, Mayor, that I did have our engineer give us an estimate cost on that. Include, uh, some lane widening, I mean, some left turn lanes that have to go in there on Seventy-Six. Since we already have a left turn on Pleasant Grove that's already in place, putting a traffic light, projected cost is around one point two million dollars to do that intersection. Uh, we don't have it funded, but, uh, the mayor proposed to ask if, if there was a possibility, if we put it into the budget, could we take out a note? Uh, we could, we could do that with a local bank, take out maybe a three-year notice, that's what you all want to do, and pay it that way, but we, we would have to add it into the budget. If you want to wait until after this budget, you can do it later in the year, do an amended budget, uh, but you have to get designed, so there has to be some work that's going to have to get done. You know, I, I can imagine it's going to be at least three to four months, or five, to get the design work done. By the time you get it off the bid, we'll be late into the year anyway, before we, you actually see anything, we're, any dirt is going out that way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of borrowing money, but I mean, at this point, on some of these, I think we're kind of buying the A-ball a little bit. We're going to, we're going to have to do some of that just to get caught up.
Gerald, did Jason, I, how much of that heel, this one may have to be taken out to make the line compliant?
I asked him about that, uh, a minute, and he, he seemed to think that it's going to be just fine. Uh, my only concern is I asked him that focus on staying within the current right-of-way that's there without having to purchase right-of-way from the, uh, the farmer there.
What's T-Dot said about this?
Well, T-Dot, well, well, if we, if we present a project, we're going to pay for ourselves, and it meets their, their, their requirements, they're going to be okay with it. The only thing they didn't want me to do, T-Dot, was just, there's flashing light there now, and I said, I want to hang a red, a red flag. We had flashing light, and they said, no, you're not. I'm like, oh, why? And then they gave me all kinds of reasons why.
So we're making, we're going to make improvements on something that they're going to make on in the next ten years, probably.
Yeah. Yeah, the improvement, you know, that's, again, the, the last, we have, I have an email, we do it.
Email from you.
Do it outside it, and what have you done. Yeah.
Remove it.
It's not in the hopper, I can tell you that right now. They, they sent me a note last week, and I know it's like, it's, it's at least ten years out. And I don't know, before you see that, that's get done, so. Uh, that's why I said, if, if you all want to do that, and you don't need to vote on that, I kind of been looking at your guys' head nods, and it seems like there may be a majority, or if not. Uh, you know, we, we can put it in the budget if you like, like I said, we can wait and do this as a budget amendment later. If you want, if you want to have another study session, if you want to have more, more information to go on before you make that decision, that's up to you all, but, uh...
We're, we're willing to go forward with whatever it is that you all decide to go on.
I'm going to put it in the budget, I think we can vote on this next. Yeah, it's just, if you mind, when we do the budget, we don't break it out of the certain, uh, you know, both this budget.
Right.
Yeah, she was, Mayor, you've been, you guys have been at this for a long time, and so you know how they go, but we will do that. I'll, I'll put one point two million into the capital budget under my engineering, uh, and, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll offset that with, with a capital note. And then, uh, and if it gets, the budget gets passed, uh, in your May and June agenda, then in July, I'll, 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 uh, I'll get a contract, uh, before you, for engineers, for our CSR, and start the design work on that, and, uh, we'll, Jason, I'll, we'll be starting to shop at the local banks to see if, uh, we're, how we can get the best rate.
Rates are very high right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I will say, that's what I do, that's what I do every single day. You're looking at eight and a half at least.
Okay.
So do you need, any kind of stay, stay?
There, there might be something for, um, you know, city municipalities that's a little better, but, I mean, the brightening rain environments right now, I don't.
How about a short, like a three-year, even a three-year short note would be a pretty high?
You'd still be, maybe six and a half, seven, but you're still looking at a fairly high rate.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your professional advice on that. We'll be, we'll be taking, let's look at that.
There's nothing through the state that we can, there's nothing through the state that we can, any kind of fund that we can borrow?
Yeah, we've tried, we've, we've, I've had, uh, Jason bring out their, their guy from their, um, their road audit program that we did before, and they said, no, we don't have the crash results out there that, that would warrant us being able to get any funding from them to help us with. Well, it was their safety, safety money is what we were trying to go after, and I'm always looking for a pot of money, and that's, that, they, they just always think, think, with on that one. And that's all we were told, and the other project will be along that.
Yeah, I, I think if we can get that one done, the Union Road, we got the developers got to pay for the traffic signal there, and then we'll do the turn right, but we can do that one after.
Right, we can, I mean, you look at how much we're putting in this year in the budget, I mean, you know, four road improvements as it is, we're looking at Wydell Serge High School, we're looking at Sage Road improvements, and we're looking at Raymond Hurst intersection improvements, and, you know, let alone these other ones that are going to be done by developers. The Tyrrh Springs, there's three different intersections there that's going to get improved, which I've not seen it yet happen, but it's, it's anticipated that'll probably take place within the next six months to a year, you'll start seeing those improvements, if not sooner. Kalisto Road will take us a little bit longer, but, uh, if we get, I haven't got, received a five hundred thousand there from the developer, but he's supposed to pay that by the time he, he gets his first plat approved, and we haven't got to that point yet on that development. So, and I, I will say that on the St. Harbor one, uh, I'll remain behind you, that's, uh, we've been working with them on, making sure they, they, they widen Bill Moss Road from, from Kalisto all the way down to their property line. So we're, you know, we've looked at some plans with our, already, Jason's already asked them to make some corrections to that, to make sure that they don't narrow it when it gets, when it gets past their site on the one, on the, I think it's the south side of the road. Uh, so we wanted to shift it onto their property to make sure they keep the road with the way we need it to keep, all the way down to almost to the end of their property line, which is close to the interstate. So we're working on that too, so.
Yeah, has any, uh, design work been done on Kalisto Road from, uh?
There has, but it does some survey work already, and I, I had a bill, I think we just paid a bill for that, didn't we, Derek, today? And that guy signed something today for that, for Kalisto Road?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're, they're working on that, so it's the first phase, obviously, that we're trying to work on there is the Bill Moss to Wilkens End. And, and some of that will come with the developer themselves, because they have to improve a little bit at the intersection there, and we'll, we'll then do the rest there. But we are going to work on it, so if we can get these, these projects going, we will, and we'll, we'll make the changes.
I have a, I have a concern with their, with our, our goals, our goal of the twenty-five, well, our goal of thirty percent. Doing that is going to take us down to somewhere between fifteen to seventeen percent.
Are you offsetting it with the?
Yes, a million, one point two million dollars, I mean, we're at three point three right now, if you take one point two from that, you're at two point one. And operating revenues is twelve point seven, but then you have to figure, and I have to take away some of the operating revenues that's shipped at the debt service fund to pay for the note, so that's going to reduce our operating revenues. So I've just quickly calculated it, like I said, it's seventeen percent, just, just with the expense, not adjusting the revenue side.
Not just the revenue side, going to, okay.
What about the thirty-one W intersection, uh, improvements? I know there's a grant ties to that, is there any way we can push that to, to make the intersection of Seventy-Six and Pleasant Grove more, uh, priority?
Uh, well, we're only, we're only paying like two hundred thousand dollars on that, so, I mean, it's an eighty, twenty grant, so if, yeah, if it was, yeah, if it was the same, it would be, that would be different, but, uh...
So, this one point two million, where would it come from if we budget it? Is it the general fund, is it?
It would go in.
Streets?
General fund, hundred, under my engineering, that's where it would go. And you're saying you're offsetting that with an equal amount of revenue that would come from a note?
No, you can't, I mean, yeah, I mean, it, I guess technically, yeah, I forgot to add that in there.
Yeah, you got to add that in there.
But it's still, I mean, I've still got to shift the operating revenues down because of shifting it to debt service fund, so. Even with that, I mean, we're twenty-six point six percent, I mean, it's probably going to go down to twenty-four, twenty-three, something like that, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just something to keep, just something to consider, and that's, that's important because we have personnel and we have utilities. We have other things that are obligated in this fund. It's not like the other funds, where we don't have personnel and other things. If something wasn't happening, we don't collect property taxes at the rate we did collect.
We don't, we say.
Before, you know, before I was here, then.
So I've got to keep going on stage, we want to keep moving on stage, but that, that's the only way we can fund it, is if we take a note out, uh, to cover one, one point two million dollars in budget with. And who says? We're going to take everything else out.
Who says one point two million dollars to do it?
I'm not sure, that's just enough.
We've had many, many estimates, and it shows those five hundred, six hundred and five dollars.
Yeah, only fans, you know, on the, you know, like the bids, I mean, like today, we opened two bid packages, and then our, our bids were, were pretty good. We, we were pretty satisfied, but I've seen others, like you seen, they're a nightmare, you know, like throwing away.
Ask something crazy.
Yes.
Rock or anything over there.
Yeah, like North Palmer Chapel, it's already two fifty, and it came back to be over five hundred thousand.
It, it needs, it needs it bad, but, I don't, I don't. It's personal, I'd say put it next to your budget, and work at, get, give you a year to work on it, to get it started, because it's kind of almost, uh, just getting it done quick. It's kind of costly, and rest of your budget, I'm saying.
I mean, the one point two million is for what? A full-blown four-way stop?
Without the question of years, just put lights up.
Freeway extension.
Leave it like it is, just put some lights up. Put the states required, turn lanes, and all this other stuff.
Two hundred fifty foot, turn lanes.
And then a few years will come.
Can we have jobs on?
We have.
I mean, I mean, or slow them down, what's the speed look like?
The issue is during the mornings and evenings, at the most, any time during the day, I go out there, you can't see that intersection. But mornings and evenings is very, very difficult.
What if you do dangerous intersection signs up in the road and do some electronic speed?
That's why we already have a flash that's there.
More warning than anything.
And I'm hoping the Wydell Serge High, well, the Wydell Serge High School road extension will help relieve that intersection. It's on the, you know, Seventy-Six, yeah. Well, it should give us significant relief, but, like I said.
Remember what the T-Dot told, the, the safety got told, Mike, about some of the other stuff, we have a lot of traffic back up. He said, we like that because if you have an accident, it's a fender bender, it's a slow speed. Now, that's kind of, it didn't sit well with us, but we're trying to get money from him, he said, oh, no, we kind of like that. If they're moving slow, it's a fender bender, not a cash grab. And over there is moving slow.
It's true.
It's true.
It's an unusual request, I said it a bunch of times, like I said, this is my thirteenth year doing the budget trade, I think only at one time did I have a question come up about chanting. Something real minor, it was you, Quill, you brought it up a few years ago, we, we had to do it the, I think UPS backup versus the grid smart or something, remember? I think you had.
The UPS backup.
That was the only thing we changed.
Our, our traffic lights working on the front of the house.
Right, and so we're, we're almost there.
Probably getting there, and that's been three weeks.
We're almost there. I, I know, it's just like when you, with, we'd like to get projects done now, but it just takes so long. But we, if Mayor, and he feels he has the support, what we'll do is we'll put it in the budget, we'll take it for what it is. We'll present it to you at your June, uh, meeting, uh, and then, you know, if, if it looks good, you have an opportunity to amend it again in June, if you'd like it before the second reading in, in July, in June. If you have to make the amendment in May, excuse me. So we'll put it in for your May, if it's something you guys are okay with it, gets through the first reading, fine. If you feel like, okay, we don't think we really want to go that route, let's pull back on that particular issue, we can take it out again before your, your June, uh, meeting, and then we'll know then, huh? I think that would make, that'll give you guys to think about it, and, uh, and then you guys can make your decisions at the May meeting. So, any other questions? I'll turn it back over to Mayor.
I've got one more thing.
Yeah.
I decided, uh, in the process of my retirement, move it up quicker, so this will be my last meeting as a city auditor. And I'm on a, I'll still be, I'm going to take a little time off, do some traveling, and do whatever I want to.
From December to?
What?
From December, is it?
No, I'm doing it as of seven thirty-three.
But it was December, yes, so you moved it up?
No, I was going until the end, but now.
You're not?
No, I'm, you know, if I get up right now, I'll make it before seven thirty-four. Soon as the gal gets.
Don't edit it.
We're just going to remain in session for the day.
I got golf to play, vacation.
So you're leaving before we sign on some, someone's replacement, is what you're saying?
Uh, seven thirty-four now.
We hit the gavel soon.
Yeah, so they were practicing during school and, um, they kind of, they actually had a gang fight. So they're just doing, you know, a little bit of, uh, field.
At that intersection, full post. Oh, Mark, Mark Carroll.
He called him.
Um, he has, there was a part that went there, he told me. Three times his driveway just got ripped up.